Well, good evening, everybody. President Rowan is the guest to this evening, so I am as those clerk at all meetings were. And it's been our role call, so it started with that first thing. Eric. Video.
Here.
See him here. Here.
Here. Here.
You're in. President Rowan, actually, um, he is not participating locally. Um, he is not present for the forum, he will not be voting. He is observing. At the beginning of the whole, we did, we did this this evening. Chair, you have to do a present that we need to get you in. Jay Rubin. Uh, is there a motion? That you're in. Chair, right? We're going to see. So.
That.
All the favors. Um. Um. We are not live streaming people, first of all. Great. Uh, we're not live streaming this meeting, but the video player will be available on the filters. And at this point, if I please get a motion to approve the minutes from what your students regularly in January sixteen. We hear in our meeting, the whole meeting that say that it is. As well as our close, that we know on December nineteen. So. Uh, uh, it all was a favor. I. Okay. That is. President. Uh. Um, at this point. Uh, the next item on the agenda is public comments. This is where we allow members of the public to present. Uh, or the topic that is within our review. Uh, but not listed as a separate video. Like the speed about speaking of management that is listed on the. Specifically, we add any weight to it. It's called. That. Any of our speech, sure, if you love it here. Sure. For as Mr. Stafford. This time is intended as an opportunity to talk to people. Uh, the listener, you have to think it's not ordinarily a time for discussion or getting. If it's appropriate, we need to make the staff respond to our end of issue, uh, raise middle there. All speakers, we would minutes and prepare all people straight in the present school. The request of all figures irrespective, simple, and yes, the audio and slide. Comments during or after and speaker and. For those who want to. To state they're correct. Is there anyone in the audience who can walk? Yes. Please. And let a three months on that. Of the.
Uh, my name is Claire. For each year. Um, I just wanted to talk to the board about the number of homes that are being launched and run from a specifically polar homes. Um, in late twenty-two, my husband and I bought a mansion in Glenville, but the next year and a half, I'm in a family. For us before that, because we love the property and many mature trees, historic homes neighboring ours. However, during that year and a half of renovation, three historic properties on my street were demolished. It is not the same street as it was in twenty-two. In place of those architectural treasures are colossal poorly designed houses with absolutely no consideration of context. It's very sad to see the unique architecture of this wonderful town disappear over time. Partly why we moved to the third place. Unfortunately, this is happening everywhere in Glenville, because it seems like Glenville is on set. Developers building massive multimillion dollar homes can take advantage of a permit fee that is insignificant to their bottom line. While homeowners want to renovate their historic homes facing surly high permit fees and limited variance options. Small and medium sized homes are being torn down and replaced with massive ones. Excluding lots of potential buyers, particularly young families looking for a starter home. This issue is not a trivial one, the trade down epidemic has consequences that I don't have time to go into right now, but they are devastating. After reviewing notes from previous board meetings, it's clear that the issue has not been brought up. Or has been brought up again and again by the Division Commission, along with possible remedies, but I don't see any meaningful action taking place. Just verbal admissions that morning to be done. For that reason, I started a petition asking you, the village board, to make immediate and impactful changes. Our petition is asking for a change in the zoning code and permit fee schedule. An increase in demolition delay period and a substantial development impact. More details can be found on the petition website, which is saveglenvillehomes.com. And just to be clear, I do not want to infringe on property rights, but I want to level the playing field between developers and regulators. Um, so in my free time, I'm just reading flyers to rental homes to make residents aware of the petition. And I received many messages of support. One resident wrote, I fully support this initiative to preserve the unique character of Glenville. I have watched two generic huge homes sprout on our street, blocking sidelines. Sadly, I have seen similar generic homes sprout all over the neighborhood. Another wrote, we're losing the special character of Glenville. Another, I am so tired of it's quickly cluttered and bills. It is really, we're impacted, we need to use the side. It's long overdue, the village needs to work out. Thank you.
We're lost. Alright. Uh, then moving on, the first item on our agenda are the reports of our committees. And I will just say for those of you who weren't here, uh, we just had a little bit of a meeting. And we was talking about the fact that you're now a whole vote committee. What does that mean for us? Or the opportunities? Which of those opportunities should we provide for our votes? Spend an hour and twenty minutes talking about those that include everything from additional sources of revenues. Uh, hopefully the the bulk of which are not. Burning only our residents, but we can share it with others. To. What are improvements to look like, for example, in the zone? Uh. Asset recovery. Economic development, economic incentives, um, this whole world of things that we need to do it. What are the people come up that you can work with? On this word of the clubhouse is expected. A longer term response than we're ready to do. Or we better aligns with the useful life of assets in most next will probably save the residents apparently. We could put a bunch of dollars in here, that's it. Um, so that's nothing we talked about in the whole and, um. Lucky you all, I didn't talk to the ball about the incident as well. And Tuesday night. Tea. Um, we went through our. Maybe yes, maybe. Uh, general comments about. Number of tremendous courses. Thankfully exceeded both of our budget targets and prior states. Even actors. Uh, what on all this one. Uh, we discussed sales. This is small people, it's small. And in general. But expenditures are admitted. We also discussed the village is going to be addressing anticipated, anticipated challenge and potential budgetary impact. We submitted that parents. But obviously, that is still part of the effort and intention that that's in can and can't. When we need to outsketch. On capital, I would think. Uh, we discussed the number of, uh, we discussed the number of capital expenditures. Which had originally been budgeted probably to twenty-four and well over twenty-five. In fact, there's a bunch of amendments on the, uh, the latest agenda to account for that. Uh, but it's important to note that these are things that we've been budgeting for last year, so the money's sitting. It's not like my husband, I don't mean spend that money sometimes, it's still sitting there, it's available. So, uh, technically, we would now be. Moved to this year. Uh, we discussed, uh, something that it's, sorry, I agree. The new community investment program working as a form that has been developed and is still in process. But I think it is to make things easier for people to go online fairly quickly. See, for example, what is it that you keep hearing about this capital, what's going on? When, what stage should I begin? You know, when will things be going, how to, it's a whole, all sorts of things and the format that. They has been developed and it's much, it 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 really is, I feel very useful. As well as an interim plan. Uh, and lastly, again, you back at the bonds I just mentioned, bonding all on Monday. And that's the first step, issuing our fondness from. Uh, so multiple projects. And this will be the first time we hear and say, hey, we're all ruled. Looks to the brain of our audience. Also. I'm looking. If it had to. Will you, will you have some very? Oh, about that. And it's. Trust me, listener, if you please tell us about the plan.
Yes, my agreement is very, very short. Um, the plan which means now. That's, yeah.
Start contrast to. Um, so trustee Loewer, could you please tell us about my story?
For the three million eight thousand programs, six percent, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. He was reminding us for our. Four nineteen week winners of our weekend T sheet. Summer program is available online, it's a great interest in junior hands for the three. In lots of local residents that, um, using this program. But our planning is going well and the public bid, we all raised and this week, we paid a fair worth. Bit. Speed. Boss. And the next golf area we're going to be scheduled for this. Very much.
Now, according to the sustainability task force, testing the bodies.
Thank you, trustee Rubin. The Sustainability Task Force met on January twenty-nine. We discussed, uh, many different ideas for educational initiatives for twenty twenty-five. The leadership recapped our meeting with village leadership on the issues of sustainability initiatives that can be done using the village's new home rule authority. We also discussed promoting the buckthorn herb site collection program as well as the upcoming recycling poach web app. We will also explore new educational initiatives like promoting reusable shopping bags. And proper household battery disposal in addition to continuing education on composting. We, um, also presented, uh, with the presentation about capital projects that are planned for, uh, this upcoming year. There was a lot of discussion about how to support buckthorn removal north of Maple Hill along the Green Bay Trail. And we also received very exciting update on the golf course clubhouse project and the planned buckthorn removal near Green Bay Road and the Wesley intersection. We also started planning the annual donating recycling drop off event, which will be held on Saturday, March thirty-first. So please mark your calendars and our next meeting will be held on February twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Trust me, sir.
Yes, thank you. So the brief, um, and not. Briefly, I had a top line discussion about. Yes, for possible weekend. Our next great discussion today. Star.
Uh, trustee other. Uh, you please. Also.
Thank you very much. The preservation commission met on Tuesday, February fourth. To review a roof permit for certified landmark at four forty-six Washington Avenue, approving the in kind Caesar plank roof replacement. Um, they also approved a demolition permit for eleven thirty-three Mayfair Lanning. A property that is not historically significant, but certainly would have the potential to serve as an affordable home. They ultimately decided not to have a meeting with the owner, but didn't want to. Glencoe Historic Storyman app. This is a map as posted on the village website also received a comprehensive update, including revised summaries of certified honorary and significant landmark structures throughout the village. The commission also received some data on the previously approved renovations. Which was being thwarted. Needs a certificate of an appropriateness for certified landmarks. And that address is for eighty, a state road. Very unique, um. Structure and some of the things that are protected are inside and outside. The village has the, their rare building permit application is presently reviewing their proposed changes against the commons recovered landmarks. The meeting concluded with a presentation from chairman Peter Benvetton. Delivering, delivering the annual state of preservation in Glencoe. This is an update summarizing the total number of certified and honorary landmarks and reviewing past to past year demolition. The next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for March twelfth. Moving on to the tree commission, uh, the tree commission only meets every other month. But let me, uh, tell you what they're up to. Uh, they met on February eleven. Um, with the village's development services staff. Uh, the, the staff did a presentation concerning the villages treating preservation ordinances. There was some discussion about fine tuning the ordinances, which really haven't been updated in almost ten years. The main area of concern includes how to encourage the preservation of additional trees associated uh, with the redevelopment of existing properties. There also was some discussion about heritage. Uh, there is, Eric's been in the review of the. Pass nineteen sixty-eight study. And, and updated of that study is underway now by some volunteer work being done by the commissioners. And, um. We are also taking a look at methods to mitigate, um, the droppings or shelves, all that trees, which are sometimes a little. Roots of our neighbors. So, um, there are also excited upon a new tree nursery, nursery. Just a joint venture with the park, so excited to be the park district. I treat preservation as well and replace entries. The next commission meeting will be reported for fourteen. Thank you for twenty twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Excellent, good job. Is, uh, really?
Thank you, trustee Rubin, uh, just a couple items on your manager's report this evening, uh. First one is particularly exciting, I'd like to be at, hopefully, rather than others, please come forward. Uh, and introduce our new system of safety on the syrup. We'll be spreading in this evening. Uh, this is always very nice, sometimes.
Thank you, sir. Honorable president Rowan, village trustees. Thank you very much for the opportunity once more to introduce another wonderful addition to the Glencoe safety team. Benjamin Allen Thelatos. Ben is joined here by his father Daniel with Karen and. So talk to him, some great stuff about you. Take some pictures. The fellow associate family deals were originally from Lamont, Illinois. Where parents Daniel and Karen raised Ben and his sister Sarah. Daniel served with distinction and was in the fire protection district, eventually retiring after thirty-two years of service. It's a fire. I'm one of the country's civil services and trustee, and the Lamont Fire Protection District Board, it's my understanding, Danny, is a previous work in relationship with another member. Karen now enjoys life as a retired private agent. Ben's sister Sarah was named a jointest, that she is covering group shift. Uh, as a firefighter permanent for Lyle Woodridge Fire. As one of the guests. The fire service is in the Philadelphia. After graduating from Lamont High School in twenty sixteen, Ben attended the college of socialists and associate public science. He then graduated with a bachelor's of arts in communications. Since then, he's been working on additional security of what's going to change. While he taught, you know, attendee for photography. And as he worked as a lab assistant, demonstrated his grace. After graduating from the fall, he bought several research departments. One. Twenty twenty-one. He quickly earned a reputation as hardworking, creative person. Even earning a commendation for rescuing an unresponsive victim from a storage truck in LaMonte twenty-two. But as it happens, we were lucky that Ben took an interesting life. Now left vehicle. Old one is a solid one. But a nearing two hours. Or each night, the north central fog in a busy day can wear so. It's what we call express with it. Last August, he participated in a ride along with the students, met the entire team, was working a day, decided to fly for that. After several interviews, he might be impressed the policy. Just like that. Like another. And by the commission, we were very, very. By coming here, he can now satisfy both the police. And formally fulfill the family condition of the fire service, like his father and sister. I am sure who are against this one. But just for the record, Ben, we will make sure we send you to an academy and give you care the next one. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you public safety officer Benjamin Thelatos, bad number sixteen. Then we still. Know that's a, for the village manager, we're going to the old office. Next book will be joined by your family. And afterwards, we'll take a brief right recess, uh, for progress.
Where is Ron? Say. Oh. This is, this is our first very, and I'm not in the village, so I just making sure that the appropriate pictures is. Um, yeah. We could make you. Each other. Say you and raise your right hand, repeat after me, I say your name. I have entered, do solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States. The constitution of the state of Illinois. And the ordinances of the village of Glencoe. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the position of public safety officer. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. So before I wrap this up, I always have to make sure my people stay in meetings. This is exciting stuff. I just always say again, pretty. Um, and we have a new member joining village team to welcome him. Um, we think, and I think this is backed by a lot of people, this is the best place to work in the world. And without, uh, any kidding, it is a community that will embrace you as the newest member of the public safety department. As it has embraced every of the public safety department. That's because the public safety department does such amazing work. Presidents and businesses who live and work here. Um, you're joining a wonderful tradition with amazing leadership. Um, amazing tom hearts that you will work with every day. Um, I'll tell you, uh, those of us who are grateful, they be following streets, keeping us safe. Um, and working on an app all of us every day. So Ben, thank you, well. Um, no doubt, you had an amazing opportunity in the previous community, we'll be looking forward. The next time we bring you up here to read a tireless. Um, and, uh, after, after a long career of amazing service, that's. Thank you for twenty-one team being here.
Thank you.
And let me, just for a moment, I can't see this. Why would you be this if I did not? Um. Restate what President Rowan often does at this time, which is to say, in Glencoe. Uh, police officers, public safety officers are your friends. The kids know it, adults. And we are thrilled. That you signed this, you'll take that right, appreciate it, appreciate the service, appreciate all the powers. That the previous man helping us with them. And thank you to your family as well. And for your rear service, sister's service, uh, coming from somebody my advice that is public service and blood is real thing. Um, yeah, it's grateful to have you. You guys. She's in the back, it's all.
Just want to say today, the public board, or something, our son, it's, uh. It's the light. Want to keep him safe, the community safe as long as. To his apartment or house, one's a problem. Break for, for the time. Thank you for the person you.
I have one more item on, uh, final word this evening, uh, we've been talking a bit, um, for the last few years about the possibility of putting in place a virtual legal license program. Obviously, we're familiar with the second annual legal license program. Where we give you a sticker that fixes your windshield. And then twelve months later, we give you a cover moon and spray the old one off. We're done, um, uh, but it is a process that repeats itself, not always. Okay, um, I've got a report this evening from W manager, a accident, it's giving. Transition, it's a, it's. Transition, stay in place, they're reverberating. Stay in place, thank you.
Thank you for that great. So as Ben's arrived at. Requires a legal license paper Saturday year. They are held for a period of the year, remastered April of the final year. And within these licenses, they have to. Twenty twenty-five, they will cycle or change to the personal in-stay program. And commercial format and no longer requires the shipping of the ball sticker for your vehicle or for your motorcycle. Although the sticker is longer required, we don't have small. All going for that sticker, so not for shipping. I need to be utilized. Or for those that are in holder jurisdiction that may take you. Sticker, so they will have those that are. The goal of these changes are to make people more stable. Stream on the infrastructure program and. As before, they recall the Public Safety Department was to create a separate city last year. License papers to help not only enhance the parking migration. But also to work with the. On the evening, there are two items for consideration for the latest change. The first of which is a warrant of many individuals. You're going to be any reference to a vehicle sticker in requirement displaying your vehicle. And also to repair a stolen vehicle to notify that there's a change in registration. In state. The second, data entry, sector to state that will allow them to be given for a certain data. And that will help us to write file descriptions. In devices that we have today and also to. So sadly, we mainly not being able to notice it's residence to warn us of their change. We've already started communications with. And also in Glencoe, so we're working on a communication plan. That will also ensure that that's been part of some.
Okay. And then last, just, just real briefly, while living through some. If you're. Yes, unfortunately, I just want to express gratitude to our teams that are talking about. We're being in this straight river, all of ours, obviously, with about every day. About our engineering team, about services team, public safety, obviously. Any of our ways who are supposed to be in this regular basis is an attraction they have. But it isn't necessarily pleasant, especially when the windshield are ten to twenty below zero. So I'm just, just further gratitude to our team. For continuing to do the greater of the bidding. With that, I have any questions of the board has. Otherwise.
Next on the agenda. Is consideration of the occupation during March twenty-five as in its history. This is occupation has been published with attendant theories. How like a motion? All is available. All is. And how we began. Consider, well, first of all, I said thank you. To the public security and senior to all of your, you know, joining the sustainable task force. We heard about that, very busy committee, the bottom of it. Great thanks for our committee. So we appreciate. Their listens. Motion matters again, thank you very much. This morning, because we're. We go to our consensus. And again, this is a whole school of things. But. There are a lot of discussions about. The whole. Were. Are. Through our website. So people look at this and know what's in here and we don't think that these particular agreements. Are one discussion of your speech. Then unless there is anyone who wants to. Particularly know the item. motion to send agenda. For this, we need to open. Let's see. Yes, let's see this, sir. Let's see the law.
Yes.
Let's see under. Yes, let's see Ruben. Yes.
Yes.
We are now on part of our agenda that we will follow your business. And we consider it important to badly. This is what happened. And if we could examine system building, I gave a my bird presented. Peter Beckton also adds in the present day.
It's trustee Ruben as the. The preservation commission. The village's historic preservation ordinance was established through the historic. Evening, the ordinance created a preservation commission which is responsible for reviewing landmark applications, holding hearings. Making recommendations to the village board and overseeing local authorities for additions to properties. Updates to the ordinance in August twenty-two, by firm review procedures for landmark properties. Under this ordinance are two tiers of landmark designation certified by honorary landmarks. Both designations are architectural or historical signatures. But certain ones that provide a license. A certified landmark is a property that is formally recognized as historically or architecturally significant. And is legally protected in alteration for demolition. Owners must obtain a certificate of appropriate business from the preservation commission, informing any external modifications requiring a building permit. These protections are documents entered through a declaration. Ordained with co-counselling should the board reverse designation. Certified landmark designation also offers financial incentives such as eligibility with stated. Which encourages the restoration of. By contrast, honorary landmark status celebrates this historical architectural or special character without imposing those regular. This past January, we're entering our seventh twenty-five reservation key on the public hearing for view and consider an application. For certified landmark designation of the. East will happen. The commission determined that the home at ten is having some criteria for landmark certification. And voted six to zero to recommend the village board. The home in two fifty-five days' avenue, those are mainly. He say art. Architect who collaborated closely with George Merick, leading figures, various. They brought this work which includes numerous residences across the shore embodies the arts and crafts architectural style. Characterized by stucco exteriors, overhanging eaves, prominent front porches, all of which. Originally built as a summer cottage for Raymond Scher and American Express executive to home retained its original stucco facade. Large front porch doors, expanded porch, modest floor area ratio. Is located next to Cow Park in the Green Bay Trail and it will. In twenty thirteen, Mr. Henry purchased the home to market at Walmart. Who had lived there before, I can offer minimal changes, preserving PR version of such. Doors. This was the interior layout. Now the elements are seen to modern and normal, preserving its historic integrity, with any inferior modifications designed to match the. Character of. Given the historical. Two fifty-five days' avenue, as well as the homeowners demonstrated limited preservation. The preservation commission placed a recommendation for the village board's consideration. Of approving the allocation formally as a name. The homeowners are here this evening as well as the preservation, preservation commission chair here, in fact, involved in. Ashed border. Good evening. Good evening.
For the record, my name is Peter Van Beckton, I'm the chairman of preservation. I think it's fair to say that this house is one of the most visible and memorable offices. Because of its proximity to. In the village center. Just about everyone in the village is. And as Ben mentioned, it was one of only two or three that was to save part of this. Right as he was transitioning away from the practice of George Mayor to his own. And so this represents kind of a transition into independence. And so it is the. Really kind of a unique moment in that man's career. And there's a preservation and it's terrific that this house still stands pretty much the way it has been the last. Sixty. You know, declaring a home a certified land, it's not all that common. Happens only once every two or three years here. This is the twelfth home. Out of about three thousand. So there, that's a kind of a unique. For a little context. Since nineteen eighty. The village is approaching about thirty percent of its housing stock has been replaced. On down. Since nineteen eighty, almost thirty. Last year, the village lost five architectural landmarks and significant. And so far this year, six landmarks and significant structures have demolished. Certification ensures that this house will not be demolished and it will be here after. The commission greatly applauds honor for their architectural sensitivity. And commitment to keeping this house intact. Both for now and for the future. There's a really famous quote, preservationist that speaks this. He said, preservation is about the. This is indeed the cause for celebration, both for the preservation of village character. And its architecture. As well as the long-term protections for this house. However, as you all know, there's much more that can be done to encourage preservation and met with you forward and look forward to. Renewing that conversation with you again as we want. So with that. I don't know who's. And then we have a nicer figure of a person. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
If not, then please have the motion to approve the ordinance. Which will establish a certified landmark identification. Your votes at two fifty-five days' limit.
That's it?
Second. This review of votes. Trustee Pollux? Yes.
Yeah.
Stevia Pottles?
Yeah.
Christina Pinnock?
Yes.
Stevie? Yes. Stevie Scott?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. So on behalf of the preservation commission.
I just want to say we're thanking the board and it's the band and Erica, Peter Dudley, really appreciate all your help. If I can give any help, it was fun working on this. There's so much history in Glencoe. It's such a beautiful town and I can help be a part of sort of big tech. Because of the local vote earlier. I'm awful. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Next item on. Is considering the performance, we have to use special use permits allowing offices of more.
Good evening, members of the board. The village received a special use permit request for. An office use at the ground floor storefront at three eighty-five Parker Avenue. This is located in the B one zoning district. Just to catch you up to speed, as a quick refresher. All non-restaurant and non-resale uses in the B one zoning district. Require a special use permit to operate on the ground floor. It's an important clarification there from the slide. Where we stand currently, the zoning commission recommended approval of this special use permit request on February third. Which brings us to where we are here tonight. The proposed use at three eighty-five. Avenue is a general office use for property management. The space is approximately eight hundred square feet. It is currently vacant and it was previously a medical office. Just to give you a general reference, the space is slightly larger than likely what is the smallest restaurant space in Glencoe. Which would be True Juice. There are residential units above and behind the subject space. So it is a mixed-use building and it is on the very edge of the B one zoning district. Abutting the RC single-family zoning district. So the village board should ultimately consider the impacts to surrounding properties, public utilities and infrastructure. Whether or not a different location without a special requirement requirement is. On the screen here, you can see an aerial view of where this property is located. It's at the front, abutting the sidewalk there along Parker Avenue. The property is split zone, so the building itself is zoned for B one in the business district. Immediately west or to the left on the image shown on the screen is zoned RC for a single family. So. On the screen here is a street view. For those of you who are not familiar with this location, it's three eighty-five Parker Avenue. This is from twenty eighteen. The conditions out there have not changed significantly, so it is fairly similar to what it looks like today. This is another perspective, just where it's located on the fringe of the downtown zoning district. Again, immediately adjacent to the RC single-family zoning district. The village did receive three letters of support, all of which were residents and two of which are also business owners. In Glencoe, so. One of the public comments that were received by the village is actually a resident in the same building as the applicant. And likewise, we did not receive any opposition for this special use permit request. And at that February third. Zoning commission meeting, the zoning commission did unanimously recommend approval of this special use permit. Due to its proximity to the single-family zoning. The applicant and commissioners agree that this does seem to bring a bridge between the downtown zoning to the single-family zoning. Ultimately, it is a little bit more challenging, for example, a restaurant space to occupy. Ultimately, um, it is a little bit more challenging, uh, for example, a restaurant space to occupy. Um, something of this size and in this location, and ultimately it does fill a big space. Um, so the next steps would be for the village board to determine if this SUP is appropriate. And if so, we should adopt the ordinance. And we catch conditions of approval to that ordinance as deemed appropriate. Likewise, if you determine that this special use permit or SUP is not appropriate. Good. Reprint, not of the requested SUP. With that, I will turn it over to the board with any questions.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much for presentation, um. Get the motion to approve the ordinance, ready, touching. Loud on the season. If I can get a little please, trust me, all that, yes, let's see, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You ruin it, yes.
Yeah.
You're very. Ass. Now, uh, excited on the agenda. There's a ad of the. So. Then it was. The meeting of horizon. Ben. Welcome to replace. Roots.
Thank you, customer. So tonight, I'm gonna present the results. Uh, um. Going up to bed for Dundee water main. So just want to remind you, um, this is a, one of the larger project we're doing, we had talked about doing this. Or we wanted to complete all the engineering, we thought we'd bid at the beginning of the year, um, to get the moment resolved. And so I'm happy to accomplish that. Um, so in the twenty twenty five year budget, um, we had two point seven five million dollars budgeted for this project. Um, the engineering estimate for this project was revised right before we went out to bid, and that came in around two point two seven million. More, um, and we're happy to say, um, that when we went out to bids, we received eight proposals. Um, or eight good results, the bid results ranged, um. From about two million, or I guess it was one point nine million to two point nine. Um, but most of them were in that engineered estimates, and they're all tight competitive events. Um, the lowest responsive bidder was Millennium contracting, um, so that low range there, um, they were. It's qualified. Um, with this project, um, like I said, it's one of our bigger projects. We are upsizing the existing main and Dundee, which is a six inch all the way up to a twelve inch. And that will help increase the fire flows in the northwest quadrant of our water distribution system. So with this, um, coming to tonight, um, once this project is approved. We will be sending out letters to our downtown businesses and to help them notify, um, their business operations, their trucking deliveries and employees. Of the impacts that may be coming, um, to our traffic through Dundee this summer. Will also be notified to schools, residents, or neighboring communities. Um, we'll be posting an open house, we'll be preparing exhibits, um, all to get the word out, um, to the impacts that this will have to our community via Dundee Road this. So what I have here is a graphic of the, um, proposed traffic routing. This is not the official maintenance of traffic plan, but I just wanted to kind of talk through some of the goals. And that we have with the official MOT plans. Uh, so as well know, Dundee Road is one of the main exits from the Edens. And one of our main goals in developing the MOT plans is to prevent truck traffic from going through and driving on our local roads. So we will be trying to keep, um, eastbound traffic specifically for trucks. Um, going through Dundee, uh, by keeping one lane open at all times throughout construction. Uh, heading westbound on Dundee, we'll be hoping to divert some of that traffic either north access. Hook or down. Um, the local traffic detour will be through Grove Street and Lincoln, um. And that will be. Um, the reason that this isn't, um, so cut and dry, there are four main phases of construction. Uh, so two of the phases you'll see highlighted in red. Um, those portions of the project will be installed with directional drill. And so they will have a less lesser impact, um, to traffic. The main will be installed in the parkway, and so what we're expect expecting is. Um, traffic will be, will be able to remain open during those periods of construction. Um, with some temporary length closures, specifically we'll be limiting it, um, during the daytime, so at night it'll be open. Um, and limiting into, um, during school hours as well, so we don't want it to impact the drop off or pickup. The other phases in blue require open cut installation of the water main. Um, and so that will require more significant impact to the traffic. Um, like I said, we are trying to maintain this one eastbound opening at all times. Um, but there may be, um, some situations in which we will have to do, um, a more. Phase two is. We went to Burnin Avenue, and then phase four is just the open cut to tie into the existing main in Green Bay Road. And that will require, um. A much different MOT plan, but that portion of the project is really only expected to take one to two days, um, so have a lesser impact. With that, I'll take any questions.
I have, I have a question, and a comment. Um, I think this is an important upgrade, uh, I think this will also help us potentially with the firing. Uh, and it will also, it will need, um, increase the. Pressure in that area, so I'm correct.
That is correct. I don't know if it's a. Small amount of pressure increase, um, but yes.
Um, do you know how old the present materials? Uh, the present pipes.
I don't think they have an exact date of it, no, um, but it is.
Many of us are aware of the. Um, shall we say the folks at Spooky come. And, uh, I want to make sure that it doesn't happen here.
Well, that, that is, that's a great segue, and that is something that I also wanted to talk to. Tonight, um, before I walked away. Um, I think you remember last time I was up here talking to you about, um. Village staff responding to news headlines, and this is just yet another example, and so thank you for bringing up Spooky. Um, as you may have seen last Friday, Spooky experienced a significant water main break that required, or that resulted in, um, a large amount of flooding. Um, the main that broke in Spooky was a thirty six inch diameter main. And so what we did when that happened is we came together as a staff, and we talked through what happened. We talked, I was, I, us and what we have going on in our systems. So I want to share with you some of the notes that we, um, discussed during that meeting. Uh, so like I said, Spooky was a thirty six inch main. Us, the largest main we have in our system is a sixteen inch main, we call that. The backbone of our system, it's the largest diameter main. Um, the good news is we replaced a significant portion of that sixteen inch main, um, under the Spooky lagoons. A couple years. So we do have better confidence, there was a problem area of that sixteen inch main, and we have. Uh, another thing that we noted is that in the village of Glencoe, we believe in, um. Exercising our balance in our water main system, um, so we do have a valve turning program. This allows us to understand what valves are operable and what are not. Um, so in a situation like the Spooky water main break, we would be able to react much quicker. Isolate the break, um, and stop the flooding from happening. Um, so it's, it's good for us to know what valves are working well and what ones aren't, um, so that we can come up with a plan and isolate that main break as quickly as possible. Um, we also talked about the fact that when we do these main replacements, like that we're doing on Dundee. We try to make the smart investment decisions at the time that we're investing in our infrastructure, so. The main that we're placing on Dundee connects to all of these side rooms as well, and so we see an opportunity to extend. A lateral connection, another thirty feet and replace a valve, so we have a brand new valve in our system, we will do so. Um, so by, you know, replacing those parts or those connections now, it's going to help us more in the future. The last one I wanted to bring up too is that we have, um, someone at our water plant twenty four seven. And so we obviously know all the details of what happened in Spooky and how exactly they responded. But we do know is that our operators are able to. Because they're on site twenty four seven, we're able to better understand what's happening in our system. Coordinate with crews who are on site, um, whether that's our public safety officers to say, hey, we see a main break around the area. Um, to call in or. I call crews as soon as possible, um, but that I think is definitely something for us. Um, it's not just a, a SCA system or something that's reacting, it's somebody who's there and observing and making real time decisions. If there's any other questions on the spoken main break.
And, and thank you for being. Your passion. All the knowledge, okay, for the comments, then, uh, please get a motion to approve. So.
Second.
Trusty, yes, let's see this, sir.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Yes.
Let's see, huh, yes. Yeah, let's see.
Yes.
And then that, that brings us to the part of our agenda. Is there? All those okay? I, we're in charge.